Rest.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. This is the Board of Selectmen. Today is May 1st, 2025 at 6 o'clock. We're opening the meeting. We're gonna announce at this point that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel, C A T, Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. If you would like to talk, please use the microphone and state your name and if you're a resident or you're presenting aboard or anybody else. To get us fully started, I'm gonna ask everybody to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So today is also Principal, School Principals' Day, kinda like remembering our principal who just passed away a few weeks ago, Katie. Good luck on the new principals and everything else, and thank you for all your service. The agenda looks different today. We're gonna continue discussion regarding the town's website redesign, updates, possible options with a brief presentation made by revised government websites.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board this evening. So as the board may recall, last week I had presented the board with a packet of information from Revise. It was a proposal that they had drafted based on the conversations that I had with Revise. And I said that this week we would have a representative from Revise to just briefly go over their proposal and to answer any questions that the board may have at this point. Again, this is just early stages, just as one potential option here. And, you know, I believe Sean from Revise is on on the Zoom call and is here to walk us through a brief presentation and to take any questions from the board.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Sean, can you hear us?
I can. How are you doing? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. The floor is all yours.
Sure. Can you see me? Everything's working?
Yeah.
All right, perfect. So yes, I'm here as a member of Revise, looking into the website and the proposal that I had sent over. So I'll share my screen so everyone can kind of take a look if I can get that. I'm not sure if I need permission to do that, however, so we can see what it is that I'm seeing. Let's see, looks like I just sent over the permission. Would I be able to?
So should be able to share now.
Everyone see that okay?
Not yet.
In a minute. Yep, now we are.
Oh, it's mine. All right. So great. So yes, so I'm Sean. I work with Revise. So we are a municipal website provider and we were looking into the website to kind of see as far as the implementation for all the new functionality and the redesign to kind of go over all the communication aspects that you would be needing. We work with thousands of clients, so we work across every state and we have a lot that are actually close by as far as like examples. So you could take a look as far as the customization and creation of the websites that we do. As far as what we would be doing and implementing for your site, we'd be making sure the site would be having the ADA compliance. So that way you can have the screen reading softwares that would be able to function with that site. Or like say if you needed to change color contrast, so that way if you had a red and green color blindness, you'd be able to see it, things of that nature. Functionalities for like document centers, FAQs, and updating everything that exists with the current site as it exists for you. So you'll be able to handle everything internally in-house and we handle all the performance and the redundancy aspects and security. But you'll be able to sign in and make all those changes. But the site will also have the full technical support for you, so you don't have to worry about, you know, being left alone after the site has been designed. And as far as the proposal and the aspects that would be included with the site and looking into what exists currently onto the page here. So I know that the current page template structure that was built by Civic Plus a few years ago is obviously very limited in what it is that it can do and it's causing certain issues and certain, you know, overlapping elements that it needs to be updated and have a new fresh look. So as far as like what we do, we're building out the sites that you'd be able to integrate like video options or we don't do wireframe structure and you can actually create out exactly what you wanted to do with it. So all of our sites can look very different from each other. But the functionalities are going to be there to address for certain concerns that your site has now. So for instance, say like being able to find information on the site requires multiple different clicks to get to it. So getting to everything within one click or being able to have, you know, FAQ structures. So if I'm looking for particular elements that it would be able to predict to text, pull it out for you. Or, you know, if you have multiple different events on a calendar that they're not going to look the same, that they would be able to, you know, work without having to jump into a wholly different page to do it. So it's gonna be much more of a user engagement aspect. So like this is one of our sites right here where we'd be able to focus in on any type of news, spotlights, calendar, event listings and be able to have, you know, as many calendars as you wanted to do, any type of pictures and updates that you wanted to have. Mapping is automatic and it is much easier to see on a phone. So we'll also be able to make sure that all the migration of the material that exists on the current site would also be moved into the new site. So you'll be able to have document management, so you can have everything be keyword searchable and to have those elements already be built in into the site's design. And there were other aspects as far as like optional features that we were looking into. And I don't know if everyone in here has currently seen the proposal and I can go over the elements of what's included onto that here. But any questions so far about like what it is that we were looking into?
So far you're doing good. Just, you know, if we have a question.
We may interrupt you, but we'll save them to the end. That's right.
No problem. So yes, so i- if you didn't have the proposal in front of you here, I just have a copy of it, so that way we could take a look at that. So as far as the scope of the project and the different stages of what is that we would be doing for the actual creation and development and the multiple revisions with the design is all included as part of that. And it has a listing of all of the included applications here. So being able to do job postings, staff listing directories, FAQ functions, document centers, all those things that we were just going over. And then, you know, as far as the implementation between having a custom site or say like what you have here, which is a template structure with Civic Plus, that you would also say have that as an option, but based on what it is that you would be looking for to address all the other issues, custom makes a lot of sense for you guys. And for this here, as far as optional features, making sure that if you needed to have fully online, submittable forms with workflow backends, that you would be able to do something of that nature. Being able to have the email text notifications or any other optional applications that we do. So we would be able to address kind of any type of needs and concerns that you have with the site. So mostly that's that's as far as the front end and the proposal. And if you have questions about the pricing, obviously I can show you the backend as well here. So let me see if I can actually pull that up here. So when you're signed in into any one of our sites like this, that you would be able to see that everything is editable within the pages, that it's designed to be very intuitive. So if I need to make a change, say to like a picture slider or something of that nature, it's going to have FAQs for what am I doing? Or virtual tours of buttons, so that way you never have to have something where somebody new is coming onto the site who doesn't know how to work with it, wouldn't be able to figure it out right from just looking at it. So this is all as part of how the CMS is structured and functioning, so it's a little bit easier to be able to manage. Say even on regular pages like this here, if you know 5% of Microsoft Word, you're gonna be fine. Like this. So being able to add in pictures or videos embedded or being able to even create out simple web forms. These things are drag and drop functionalities. It's going to be very intuitive for you. Or let's say even calendar event listings. So making sure you have multiple different calendars that you can color code and do anything that you need to do with the particular departments. That's all going to be featured into the site and it's basically you fill in boxes and it does the rest. So any particular functionality that you wanted to see or anything else that you kind of wanted to go over as far as what Revise is and how we work with the sites?
Let's chair a few questions. Yes, sir, go ahead.
So thank you very much, Sean, for the presentation. Very impressive.
So far, with our current system with through Civic Plus, we've found it's very difficult to use for an operator. Even the administrators, I'm one of the administrators for the website and bringing on new people. So giving access to employees to say a section of their website. One of the things I like is you can limit the access. So something like assessor's office, we can limit to the assessors. The administrators have access, but the assessors can't change anything else on the rest of the website. They just change what's in the assessor's office on their section. Same with the other departments. I kind of like that feature. Is that something you guys have?
Yes. So you'd be able to actually do that. In any page on the site. So you can do it in multiple different ways. But say like granularly right here where I would be able to set permissions for particular people. So say I would be able to edit these pages, but Audrey cannot. Like that would be something that you can just do per page if you wanted. Or when you're actually creating out roles and permissions within the site like this right here, creating new users, what roles they have can include things like for different departments, so that they would only be able to control their sections of the site. So yes, absolutely, that is already a part of the system.
So another problem we have.
Civic Plus is it's difficult because once you add your user, you add them into the website, the overall website. Then you're gonna add them into their roles into each page, like giving them permission. So you have to go into the page and add them to that page also. So you're adding them multiple times where it would be much easier if you could just add the person like you're saying, then just grant the permission to those areas. Because it's difficult to add somebody.
Yeah, it's a nightmare.
It's it's not user friendly at all. Yeah.
It's kind of, it's like it's easy to put the person in initially, but then to get them hooked up and all with their proper spots, it's really hard.
Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, with us, when you actually do that and you set the different roles and structures that like when we're actually creating out the site and those particular departments that we would actually be able to on the backend with the support, like just say we would actually be able to create those departments, so that way you can add those people in within those particular sections. So that way that doesn't happen anymore. Yes.
So adding agendas in minutes, how how difficult to add an agenda or minutes? Because that's something that seems like they have a difficult time doing also.
You and I are totally on the same page. I was gonna ask the same thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine. It's just what we're thinking.
So yes, as far as like when you have a. Document center that's going to be built out specifically for doing things of this nature. So like say like this right here on the backend, you'd be able to say create new categories, change the sorting and objects that's in it. So say if I wanted to upload like a minute or an agenda like this, I could create new subcategorizations, be able to add in documentation. And so like right here, if I needed to say upload a file, it could just come directly from your computer. So you could drag it onto this here, or you would just be able to click into this and be able to say find like this right here. So if I needed this particular agenda listing, that's all it takes to be able to upload this. Also, it also has a converter, so that way, you know, because there needs to be a PDF document when you're doing that upload. Some people don't know that. That's already built into the system as well. Also, it includes the alt tagging like this, which is important for the ADA compliance. So all you need to do is save this here. You can create out the document summaries and whatnot, but other than that, once you do that, it's published out. So now if I go into this, that's the first one. So obviously it only takes a minute to do that.
Okay. Now, another thing that we have our.
People do frequently is adding things to the calendar. How difficult is it to add an an event to the calendar?
Here, I'll show you. So right here, if I want. To add in something like this, I'd be able to add it in. So say if I have parade, for instance, or this, if I have a particular location. So say if I have your address like this right here. If I put this in right here, the map will automatically appear, so that they don't need to know how to code anything like that. If I needed to do external links to different pages or internal links that I'd be able to put this here, it creates buttons for you. If it's say an all day event, you'd be able to put that in, repeating elements like this. So if it's a monthly meeting that you could have reoccurring, you could also make sure to add exclusion. So if it's following on particular holidays, that it wouldn't destroy the entire chain of events, which I know is actually an issue with the current calendar with Civic Plus that people have talked about. So you'd be able to do that right here. And then say which calendar that is going on. So if you have multiple different calendars that you'd be able to say, put it into community events. And here, if I wanted to add in any other aspects to it, so say if I wanted to embed a video or something of this nature, that I would be able to just say take a URL, be able to put it in or even like a signup form. So that way, you know, if it was a parade and there was a float and they needed to actually put their entries in, you could drag and drop, create an entire form for them that gets forwarded to a particular person. So something like that.
Form right there.
Yeah, right. So you have this right here. So if I wanted to change, like, say this is a float entry form. You know, obviously I'm just kind of making it up here. And then I need to say have their email address, so that way we can contact them about it. And say I could change their name, make these required elements, put that right into there. Say this is like last year's parade that you had as far as like a video that you wanted to embed in. You could add in pictures, so like PDF flyers that you put up right up onto their calendar listing. But when you publish this out, this is the listing. So like here, it's just like this default picture. But like you would be able to add in anything you need. And here's the video they put in. Here's the submission form for say putting in that float that's forwarding over to a particular person. Here's the address. So like somebody would be able to say click on this directly with their phone, so they could go right to the parade. So and it takes three seconds to do that.
You made that look way too easy.
I mean, that's really, that's any type of an event listing that that's, yes, I do it all the time. But I mean, that's the point of this, is that you would be able to throw it together, put all these things in. And if you needed to edit and change things, you could jump right back into it. And I mean, it's Microsoft Word, so you add in pictures, it's a picture icon. If I need to hyperlink in a document or a link somewhere else, it's the hyperlink. So it's it's a very simple process.
Okay. You mentioned a couple of times PDF. What about images?
Sure. As far as like, say, changing images like on a page or something like this?
No, like you just, when you did that calendar, you linked them.
What about if I wouldn't put a picture?
Oh, yeah, sure. So like on a calendar or. Say like this right here, the the same, you know, editing would still be occurring. So if I wanted to do instead of a video like what I did right here, this is like a picture icon. So you'd be able to recognize it. So I could say upload a, I'll use like this picture here if I wanted to do this. Like this was a profile of this person that I would be able to save this and I could say, you know, edit it, make sure that it's fitting within the the area and scope. So it works like Microsoft Word does on that. And then you could even change like, say, the bordering or whatnot as well. So like if you have particular dimensions or you needed it to like be on a different scale, that you'd be able to control those things directly from the CMS. But really, you'd be able to drag and drop and do that all on your own right here.
What about if I want to upload a video?
As far as like embedding the video or you mean just like linking over to a video? Or or you say direct storage of the video?
Images taking space.
And a video might be 10 times bigger.
Sure. If you needed to do a. So that is currently as far as the proposal is built out, it doesn't have like a, you need a particular type of storage to do that, which we do. So like that would be something where if you wanted to have like a high speed storage, so that way you could do streaming video that's directly served from the website, that that we could do that, it would just be at an additional fee. But most of the time, that's not usually the most cost effective way of doing that. So like what I had just done with like the YouTube video, like something like this right here. When you embed that onto there, it's actually being serviced up by YouTube itself, but it's streamed through your site. So it doesn't require you to take the space and bandwidth required to do that. So like this meeting right here, that's obviously it's being recorded. If you wanted to say then put that onto the site and just embed those, that you could do it that way and link over to those elements. So that's kind of the question there would be depending on if you wanted to have the storage directly on the site. We could obviously include that type of storage for you or if you wanted to do it indirectly like this. So either way, works.
I'm a big fan of YouTube, but what I don't like, for example, is after you.
Finish the video, it brings all other cookies around with all the types of video on the town's website. So probably using something else will be good.
Or do you mean like when. As the related or a video after it ends and then there's like things you can click on?
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah. And that that's actually pulling, say, like the cookies or information from the user itself. So like it would be showing them videos that they wanted to watch, but not necessarily tied to anything from like your site in that regard. So that's more their browser.
That that's what I mean. And let's say.
They they like to search for certain things and then suddenly at the end of the video that shows up over there, that's not good. So if we have.
No one else can see the videos that they've seen as far as the related. Videos afterwards. Only the user themselves, after the video is ending, would see like those relate, like they want to click to something else that they want to see. Nobody else like say if they are watching, you know, a news station, something like that.
And I say, oh, look what I found on the town's website.
Sure. Yeah. So you're just saying that you wouldn't want to use it. I just have it. So it's just the video and then when the video ends, but there's just no related, which yeah, that's that's definitely a way to go about it. In fact, sometimes instead of actually doing, it depends on how you actually do your storage with the video. So say like if you wanted to service out and you have these videos stored internally on a server, that you would be able to actually link over to those elements, say like within, like you could say there was the meeting that happened on April 14, 2025, and you have the agenda packets, the minutes. And then you say have like a video segment right here. And when you click this, it goes to say like an internal SharePoint site that's actually servicing up that video for you. So you don't have to have it be serviced directly by the website. It can actually just be done internally by your office servers. There's lots of ways to handle how you're describing. Absolutely. You don't need to use YouTube. It's just a very convenient option for most people. But if you have that infrastructure already in place, you could do it that way as well.
That's what we're trying to find out.
Sure.
Right now, the cable saves that as a copy on YouTube. And maybe the solution is just to put a link instead of embedding them. So they jumps outside our website to YouTube directly.
Yes, yeah, that's very much. Some people will do that all over. So like we have other sites like this right here. So they they will post, they embed the the live link when they actually have the meetings. But like say here where they actually have particular listings, when you click into this video, that it goes directly to the YouTube site. So that way you don't have to have it be like where it plays here and then it has those related videos coming up. So yes, that's exactly how they do it. And you can absolutely do that here. And this is not servicing and it's not taking up your storage to do this. It's just linking over to the YouTube page that you have.
Since you mentioned it about storage, how does that work with with you and us?
If you needed us to directly save the videos for you, instead of like, say, you're using YouTube to go to your particular channel and you wanted us to do it, it's usually just done by blocks of how much storage you wanted to include. So like say on a proposal like what I have here as an optional, like if you needed to have, you know, five gigabytes of storage or 10 gigabytes of storage with the included bandwidth, that it would just be this much per block. So if you had a certain amount that you wanted to do, we would just put that as part of the sales agreement.
You can navigate it through our website and and there's a lot of information over there. Where is that going to be stored?
As far as the pages and documents, like everything that's existing on each of the department pages. So one of the first things that we would actually do as part of the site design and structuring here would be the migration of that material over onto the new site. So that's actually included. You can see here in phase seven with the site map development and the content organization, that we will actually be migrating about 650 pages and documents. So when you're creating your site maps, so like where everything happens to be within like your dropdown menus and basically your breadcrumbing, we would take all of those documents in the pages where they would need to be going. So like if you had your agendas and minutes that needed to be for the select board, that would be in this particular document center, we would upload all those directly into that for you during the creation process of the site.
And in this contract, you include the hosting?
Yeah. So yeah, the hosting is part of the. Fee structure. So like this right here with the the website hosting itself, that's already included.
And all SSLs.
Mentificates and all that?
Yes. And including, this also includes your. DNS and domain maintenance. So the the domain hosting and the website hosting, you could think of as two separate elements. So basically the website that we would be hosting is the the website itself. Then there is the the domain hosting, which is done through, you know, you have the service provider like say GoDaddy that's doing that. But you also have this tied into the .gov domain registrar as well. So we would just say take over those DNS services that you would require for that. And that's part of the the structure of the proposal already.
And to finalize my questions, I'm just gonna ask you some.
And it's it's just something that we tried the other day. If you go to our website, can you just find on the homepage, where's our phone number?
On the homepage, I don't. Maybe in the phone directory. This, you mean this number here for the Board of Selectmen?
No, on the homepage. Just I I I'm a I'm a resident. I just want to call the town hall. What do I do?
You go to a different page. Doesn't look like it actually is listed on the homepage, which yes, that's a problem. So.
My question, I'm just trying to cry like a baby and say like, we can't even put our phone.
On the homepage.
Yeah, we can't change this homepage, right?
No, nothing.
There's no way to change this front page.
We're not, I'm not at that level, no.
Yeah.
It's.
Well, I tried.
It is very complicated to to change anything on Civic Plus. And it's just not user friendly. Yeah, I I.
Could be a limitation of. The platform that you're on here, because this is a template structure built on like a Drupal platform. And I know that a lot of times with like certain changes like that, they don't allow the clients to actually be able to make those types of changes. But like the bottom portion right here, it's something that where it's locked in and that they would have to actually do that for you. So that actually might be why you can't actually access that. But yes, so like with the site like ours, that this is going to be something where you can change all of those portions. Like if I needed to actually change that bottom portion of the site, I can edit the copyright information. I can edit those those bottom portions and you'd be able to edit every single aspect to this. So yeah, that's already built in and I can see why that would be frustrating.
Yeah, I do design websites.
Basic level and and I admin a bunch of websites and and that it was very frustrating trying to work with this to the point where I said, I'm not gonna take care of this. It's just too difficult.
And so if you ever get to the point where it's like, that's your front facing element for everybody's going to go to your site first. And if it's kind of complex or it's just something that you're trying to avoid, then the site stagnates. And then everybody just assumes that it's that this is this is you, that you don't care type of situation, which really does affect if they even assume that anything's on the site. So yep, it all kind of snowballs into issues that can't be fixed by just, you know, quick fixes. You want to make sure that the site can do everything you need it to do.
All the the issues that I see is a lot of.
You know, they want to go into the news and see what's going on or they he- hear about something and they want to find out more information. And the only way to do is you click on the news and you see three titles over there. And then they click all and it's like a big mess.
Sure. Yeah. So this is the type of stuff where, you know. However, you needed to have this type of organization really helps for the front end. So like say pages like this right here, where if you do have, you know, the news spotlight segments and like how this is organized onto this. So each one is its own separate entry like this. So you can still have that type of functionality, but that it will be very specifically organized for how you want to do it. It shows those new upcoming events that would be happening with the news elements. Same thing for the calendars. So this right here in comparison to say like your homepage like this. So you know, how this looks for people and where. So you know how this looks for people and where they're going to actually be. You know, utilizing your site, they want it to be much more interactive. They want to see these things be available. They want to know that they can go between different stuff like this. That's something that we would just do as part of like. We really want to feature this out, that's how we would design your site with you. So we go through multiple different revisions with you for um how you want it to look and feel.
Yeah, that'll be good because we also are thinking about.
And for uh our business in town, you know, trying to promote them and. And you know, having a welcome, uh more like a welcoming page and show to the world that we are, you know, a friendly town, open to business. And so we want to recognize our business as well.
Yeah, so I think that actually one of the things that we were discussing.
Well, actually building this out. So one, yes, I remember talking about it, that the custom site makes sense. That's why we wanted this option one is creating this custom build. But then you were talking about say those um. The the listings for say like the local businesses, having things like these multi-use listing directories, something that's more of an optional here. But when we were addressing that, it would look say something like here where you can put out, say, your municipal listings. If I wanted to say list out the parks, I could go to all those and be able to jump in and. Get the contact information where it is on the map, or if I needed to have say like um like uh. Let's see, here I think I can. Pull them up. So uh business listings or like local eateries, this is the type of things where it's like people want to have this available on the site. So that they can pull it up directly. That is something that we can actually add in because that does make a lot of sense to make it so it's easy to access.
Great, I I I think I can keep going with the questions, but everything looks good to me. Uh you guys have any other questions?
Yeah, a couple.
Go ahead, Rich.
So I just want to make sure uh the con- it's our content, do we continue to own it?
Yes, yes, you own all the content and that is actually so just so that you. Know and don't have to worry about it. Right there. So yes, where everything that you own is yours. And so like say if you switched off of us after the fact, you would be able to take everything with you. You don't have to worry about that, including the design. So like we are building the design and look for you. So say if you wanted to implement that look. With, you know, a different system later on, that 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 still is yours.
Okay. Um. On the news page. Um, one nice feature about is it uh our current page is that you can keep things on the top. Right, so you know, maybe that first one or two items you want to all, I'll go back to the first page. Well, even here though, too, I guess. You want to keep maybe the first two things up top. Always as the other things kind of bump through, you know, maybe you're doing a survey that's going to last a month. Right, so can we, would we be able to do that sort of thing on one of on a site that you would design?
Sure, and actually what you're describing.
I've been, I I think that you've you've found like a way of being able to utilize what you have to be able to try to do something that you wouldn't really want to like have it where it's like. I just need to keep this as my news. That's just the only way that you can have this listed right here because that's the way that their template works. Usually it's like say if you wanted to have like uh featured elements or something directly up onto the front pages that you actually create out like a whole segment of that. That that page that would just be specifically for, we want to do surveys here or we want like something, so you don't have to use the news segment to do that. You can actually have like an inbuilt structure with your design that you can have that type of thing always be available for the front page. So um actually like a good example of that would be. Something like this here. So this this city right here, they actually had like a historical society for uh the creation of like. They they wanted to have something more interactive, so they actually built out a segment like this where they have like. Questions where it's like you could click into those. So imagine trying to create something like that where you have like a survey or like you have an entirely dedicated structure within the design. That would accomplish what you're trying to do rather than trying to. Ham hand something else to get it to work, so which is I think that what you were describing.
Yeah, okay. Um, another problem with um Civic Plus has been training. Basically, they offered, I think they offered live sessions for a little bit and then they did a lot of pre-recorded things, but the training was super limited. Um, and barely got into how to do things on the site. And then they just repeated those same five. Videos and then I haven't seen any training emails in like a couple of years now. So what what do you have for training? Cause. Your site actually looks in a way it's. Maybe even more complicated like, cause it this is a template, we're sort of forced into a box. Now you're going to give us like this more free form thing, it might actually be harder to use in a way, right?
Not with with the.
Between Civic Plus and us, no, I've I've actually heard that it's like we're the difference between like um. Using Windows and then there's like MS DOS. So I think that that's something where it's like they'd actually be able to utilize our backend much easier. But as far as the actual support structure and everything is concerned, so you have an entire support team that's dedicated to the sites. You'd be able to jump onto it and that be able to request. For like if I didn't know how to do certain aspects that we would be able to jump in directly with you, show you how to do it type of situation. So like um say this is uh, you know. The actual checks here.
And I I think what what I'm feeling about riches here is I, let's say we go forward. And I know we're gonna probably, you know, not to choose the template version, but at some point where we start, you're gonna give us a like a themes. Cause some, most of this website you show us are very, very busy and we're kind of like more.
Traditional, basic, simple way to get stuff.
Sure, yeah, no, this, so what they build out and when you're looking at the site.
Like this where you know, you're seeing lots of elements or like they have a lot of things that they want to feature and different like icons and locations. That that's just how they wanted to actually build it out, but you don't have to do what it is that those are doing. So like say right here, so. Uh Ray, North Dakota, so I was working, this is a population of like four hundred in the middle of North Dakota. So like they they were joking, it's like we are in the cornfields and we're just going to lean into it. That type of situation, so but they what they wanted, because basically their entire population are older residents, they wanted links, news, events, staff. So the the actual structuring and making sure that it's simple is something that you would just be able to. Create as part of the concept for the design. You don't have to have it where there's all sorts of things all over the place or like the that site I was showing you here where it's like. They have like these built in segments and like the meeting with the mayor. These are, you know, when you have like uh you're trying to market for certain things and you wanted to build out a site that really has a look and feel in a particular way. If it's more important to you for the informational sections onto that, that's what your design will reflect.
And do you, do you have training, like once this goes live, training for. You know, new users so they understand, you know, if they're in the Board of Assessors or the Board of Health, how to go in and. Um, manage their own pages.
Yeah, so we would be able to.
And so when we start with the initial site that what we're gonna do, we would actually say schedule, yes, the training for everybody on staff for doing that. And then after the fact, well, we also record those to make sure that you do have the copies of that so that because the your training is very specific for your site. Where it will go through and it has all those elements for it's like, this is where this happens to be, so that way you will know how to use those particular functions. And so that way they will be able to reference that later. But say if like somebody new comes on and they'd be able to do that, we'd be able to add that directly to the support portal like this right here. And then they'd be able to request out training wherever they needed. Yes, you could do that.
Anybody? Anybody in 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 the public have any questions? Does Mrs. Dussie have any questions?
She did, she sent me a question and I think we got it answered. Do you, you have anything more?
No.
Okay. So the MMA always has um. Like the I I don't know who does it, but when Jim and I go to that conference in January, they do like. The best three websites for towns, right? Isn't that how they do it? They go by like the size of the towns too. So small town, medium town, big town and like the best looking site, the best functionality.
So who won last year?
I don't remember, it's, yeah. But um it'd be awesome if we could win like. The best site after we do a redesign.
They think we need to make it user friendly before we do anything else.
No, definitely.
Right now, it's just not. The the big problem with our website. It is very, very basic. And it's very limited on what thing can be done. Um, so I think a lot of the departments just are frustrated that they can't. Put more into it. Or do more with it. Um, because it's so difficult to do, so it's. It's just basic information, you know, just putting meeting notice notices up there, it's. It's a little bit of a project, it's not just. Drop over and drop it into the box and set your date and there you go. You know, you you have to do quite a bit more on that. Um, and then just changing graphics or pictures or anything, it's very difficult to do. And I think a lot of the departments, if you go through our. Our whole website, it is the same graphic. Through pretty much every page, it's the same boxes. Just they're, they just say different things. Um. But there's no like, nothing to catch the eye.
So actually, what happens with that too is that depending on how you actually want to build out and structure the site, then we can actually do things.
That we call like subsites within there. So some departments, they want to have like um like as an example. This right here, this is Halsey, Oregon, this is their library site that's actually within their city site. So you can see that it's like it's basically its own separate landing, it's all specific for the library. They wanted to have this be built out and structured so that way. You would know that like it's a separate area for the how the site's built out or like say um. This is an example here, so like for a concept for this is Yuba City, California, we're building their website, but the police departments and the fire departments, they wanted to create out uh. A template design structure for their internal pages, they they would basically share the templates, so like uh the fire department would be. They could, they can make it red, they have their own separate tabs and and particular links that they wanted to do, but have all the same functions here. So sometimes that's actually how they wanted to do that for all the departments and these are just. Aspects that we could change for the customization of the design. So we've even done ones where the. Like say this right here, this is Largo, Florida. We did an entire rebranding process with them, so they actually had multiple different sites that they wanted to address, including. Say like this right here, this is their library, so this is what we call a fully custom microsite. So we did this site, we did their um. Let's see, their their parks and rec department, so this this is parked from rec, so you can see the color and in branding. Was something that they just did across multiple different sites. So say if you wanted to create out. Internal page structures like what you're talking about where they would say look different or be able to change things around and do that. That we could create like say custom templates directly for them that they would still be able to use and make it easy for them to be able to change things with it. So yeah, that that's something that's pretty common. Especially with new sites, but you know, always comes the balance of. Making sure that it's it's mostly like they would be able to make a change and they could just add in their own pages and they don't have to do anything overly difficult because you know. Like you said, the more difficult it is, the less people want to do stuff like that. So being able to add in a page with a template design. That I could say just right click and create it. And then I would have something ready to go, so I could like even pick a page template structure like this where it's uh it has built in applications like the. A staff directory right there for them or uh you know, their particular department structure that they built out during the customization process. So yeah, we could do that too. It's just how you wanted to build out the site.
But because uh from the MMA this year was Belcher Town. Hmm, okay, for a small.
Belcher Town?
Yeah.
So uh I think that's.
Is it Belcher Town, Mass?
Oh, no, you know what, that one, it looks like this is.
Is this, no, that's Civic Plus, like this right here, but I mean the the look and feel of this. It's just, I mean, we could obviously create this, no problem, but so. This is something where uh and there's different award structures like that as well. So like this one right here that I was showing you. Uh, the there's a called a Horizon Design Interactive Award, so like there's actually like national competitions for that type of stuff. So they won theirs right here. Um, so I think that's Golden Colorado. Uh, this, this one, one for theirs, uh particular. That that competition as well. So yeah, what you're describing, we would actually be able to say enter you in for that type of uh functionality or for the particular category you're talking about. Happens all the time, so we have lots of different awards.
Did you send us a list of uh. On websites that you have done in Massachusetts?
Sure, yeah, I think I sent one uh previously before and I know that on the proposal, there's a couple of different ones as far as like, you know. Um.
Those are not coming from templates, are they?
Oh, yeah, man.
From.
Adams one.
Yeah, is this a one or a custom site like for North Adams?
Yeah, uh North Adams, so this is a custom site, so yeah, I can actually pull this up for you.
Did you send any uh anyone uh from a cost um from a template?
Uh, I could find ones that are templates.
Massachusetts, I'd have to just pull up like a list of ones that they do. So like the the template structure designs, they they would be. Well, I mean, from what we're talking about like this, this is a template. So if you wanted to have those same type of like issues, we don't have the same issues like they do, like you'd still be able to change the bottom segments or whatever. But when you're talking about going those internal pages, those internal pages would have that same design structure. So you don't want to kind of bottle your neck yourself into the same situation that you are dealing with currently. So like sit this right here, this is our homesome design. Uh, this is one of our templates, so like as an example. This is um, you know, th- this is a housing authority in Texas, but they they have that structure, so like you could add in the videos, but you can see. That that's what that would be and that's basically what you have done originally with your site. So. You want to avoid doing that type of stuff, you would want to make something that's actually your own, that's what the custom design is going to be good for.
What is the price difference?
The price difference here, so like for the basic structure?
Is is built into the proposal, so like this one right here that we're looking at, this the option one, that's this pricing structure. So like this is to say the total for the first year, this includes the migration, the creation of website and the first year's annual altogether. So and it has like, you know, ways that you could break that down. This second option right here. This is for say the the basic structuring for the template site, so you can see it's just. It there are different included applications and whatnot, so you can obviously go through these uh when you're looking into it and I will send you a copy of this, so it has updated dates and everything, but. That's the pricing structure. Um. But you know, in as far as like say the custom design is concerned as well, you also have an included free redesign at the end of the contract term. So this is again another reason why the custom makes sense for everything that we've been talking about.
Wait, say that again, so it says provides a free web design refresh during last year of service and client time.
So like.
Custom site?
Yep, this is for the custom site, so say your site could look like, you know, like Swansea, Massachusetts, so like this is theirs. But then at the end of the contract term, when you wanted to re-sign up with us, we would redesign the site, so now it looks like this. So like, then the only thing that would change with that would say be just the annual fee, it would just be just like the inflationary change for. From that to what it would be five years from now. And all these costs would be free.
Okay, so we sign up for a fire contract, at least that's how this was structured and then. Okay.
So the first.
Yeah, the the length is also optional too, this is just.
Okay, where you can see like if I wanted to split the contract up across like five. Or years in payments like that, it would look like this or but you can do it as three years or whatever.
Okay, so the first year is grand and then the other years?
No, it's, can you go up and show the um, well, show the cost on. The broken down cost for the custom.
Yeah, so this here would say, yeah, this is the total, but like if I wanted to say split that across. So you could do it in like milestones during the development, so you don't have to spend it ten thousand all at once. And then every year after that's just the annual or this one right here where. We basically split the cost of the creation of the site across the length of the contract, so every year would just be this payment. For the creation of the site, so you don't have to do ten thousand all upfront, you could just spread it across. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sure. And obviously like for optional things that we were talking discussing, so like there's functionalities, so I could even include a proposal update that has things for like say if you wanted to do the microsites or like internal design structures to be different. Or like we have functional things that you could add in that are. Um, so like say chatbots for the site, that that's becoming a much more popular aspect to most municipal websites now. So that way somebody could say just like put in a question, you have an AI chatbot, this is something that you could put in. Or um, we were actually looking into say. Like the form submissions or like uh job employment applications, so instead of doing PDF documents that you would actually have say. An entire dedicated online interactive form for this type of submission, so somebody would be able to come onto the site. They could fill out like this is an FOIA request, but you'd be able to fill all this in here. And it would actually be able to go to a full backend for workflow processing. So like there's a lot of different things that you could do with the sites that we'd be able to include as part of the design. What we have here is just the basic structure for the website itself, so we can go over everything you wanted to add in as well.
So that chatbot, does that go to a you? How does that work?
This one here, no, this is.
AI chatbot, so like you actually can train this bot on every page on your site or documentation, so like say right here. How do I pay my water bill? Something like that, and it would be able to actually pull from all the different sources on your site that you've trained it on. So like say if you have a page that's dedicated, they don't even need to go into the site, they'd be able to say. You know, online payment or by phone in person, so it could create generative responses. So it's it's basically like hiring a person full time to be able to answer questions on the site.
How much does that cost?
It depends on the type of implementation you want, so uh. There's ones where it's like we actually will, you can train like five thousand pages and documents and we just do that for you for what you want to do. Or there's ones where we actually have say the um, you have backend access to be able to do that, so. You have backend access to be able to do that. So here, let me show you. It's right here. Like here, and then I can sign in just so you could get an idea. So you'd be able to actually go into the backend with a chatbot. You would say like, I have pages on my site. I want it to be able to learn. So if I want to say, um, let's see, if I find a site that I can use here. I have too many tabs open. Yeah, there we go. This is my computer. Don't worry. I have too many things open here. I'll come back to that. I'll just let it sit. This was, this is not us. This is just me. I have this. So but when you do this, you'd be able to actually go to the backend. You'd be able to say, I want it to know, say like FAQ pages are really useful for that. So say. Like here, I have all these different questions that I wanted it to be able to know. That it would go through each of these pages and it would actually scan everything that's within there. So that way, if I wanted to know, say about like, you know. The bar associations, like was there a telephone number for it? I could put that right up onto the front page and I can ask and it would be able to pull that out. So the the different pricing structures would be say, if you wanted to have that backend access, or if you wanted to also be able to. Uh, add in pages external to the site. So anything that's not indexed on yours, you could actually say, go to. Other uh, like Massachusetts informational segments, you'd be able to have it train on certain. Uh, external pages where you get a lot of your information or like state. Aspects that you need to forward over to on your site. So that way they can actually go on your site, ask the question and still be able to get the answer. So. I could actually make sure that that's a line item for like the different tier levels you wanted to do with that as well. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, um, could we do something like with the zoning bylaws? So if I went in and said, um, I wanna build a shed on my property. That it would come back with the appropriate zoning bylaws and maybe like the building commissioner's number and stuff like that.
So yeah, it would be able to. Usually create some sort of generated response. It depends on like how granular your particular answers and aspects are on the site. So like if say. Like right here, like this is just an FAQ structure, but like you can see there's just different questions. So if I was say writing in a dog. It's pulling out like that, that particular wording that there's dog within these pages. But so an AI chatbot. It's able to kind of generatively create those things. So it can pull those types of questions together and create out an answer like that. So. It would say, it's like, I see that you wanna do shed and it's like, do I need to have? What ordinances do I need to look at? It would say you would wanna look into these ordinances here. And then like if there's things on the page, what's like that there are contact information. It's like if you have more questions. Then you would be, you would call this number. That's exactly how this works. Yes. Have you ever used an AI chatbot before?
Um, I, yeah, yeah, I have, yeah.
It's, yeah, so.
Setting though, but yeah.
Right. And and so basically it's how much you put into it is how effective it is. So like if you have lots of information all over your site everywhere and it's trained on all those pages, the the better it's going to be to be able to answer stuff like that. So like if I was on. Uh, where was that here? So like this, it's like, you know, who is the city manager or like. You know, when is the next meeting or something like that, that it would be able to say, well, you know, I'm gonna go into. The calendar and I see like the city council meetings happening at this time and it would say it's on May fifth. So yeah, it it's able to do that type of stuff. So. Uh, that's why I usually say that the backend access, at least to that level is the best way to go about it because then you can actually. You you tell it everywhere where you want it to know those particular functions. So if you have a really big prioritization of like say your documentation. And you have it trained on all of your documents, like your ordinances that are say stored onto the site. That that's where it will draw that information from. And that's really helpful for people. Or it's just the site itself and like there's the different pages so that no one has to go into a particular department section. They'd be able to just say, you know. What do I do if I'm running for city council? That they would go to that and that just to say, running for city council and it would say, go to this page here or like contact these people. So, yeah, absolutely, you can do that.
And it would be able to keep like current with like the calendar. Like you wouldn't have to keep adding calendar stuff, right? It would just know that the calendar has. Events and new events get posted. So if I said, when, you know, when is like a trick or treating?
Yeah, you can. It well, so what you would wanna do with that is so like when you are training the pages, it's taking it at a particular point and then it's storing it within say like. It's brain, for lack of a better term. So like when you are doing event listings, like a calendar event. Like that, that if you're doing things that are that they're constantly updating and there's something like that, it's it's kind of like you'd have to. You have to teach the bot that there's something new. That that's kind of why the backend access is important because you could say like, I could retrain on the backend and I don't know why I can't actually get this open just so that you can see it. But so, um, that I would have to do that again and again. So that way it would know that those calendar events are listed because it's basically like taking static information. It it's not gonna automatically know that something's different on the site unless you tell it. That that there's something new onto the site. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, that's, that's the nature of like these chatbots in general is that it's. You're you're, it's not, it isn't actually a human. Like it it can't necessarily be able to decide out where it's like, well, I know that there's that the calendar updates. On its own all the time. So I'm going to decide for myself to make sure to retrain on this stuff. It only knows what you tell it to know. So. Which is good, cuz then if you don't, then the you have Skynet. Uh, but that that's where you would just need to make sure that it's training on those those things to be able to see that again. So it's, it's definitely a useful function for sure. Uh, it's one of those things. It's it's very new. So a lot of people haven't implemented it fully on other sites, but I can tell you within a couple of years, that's going to be. Every site basically has to have one of those. So.
Well, um, anything else?
No, I think I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good too.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
And I can send over a paper. Uh, to Jim as far as like any uh, optionals and features that you wanna put in and then we can go from there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean.
Yep, thanks so much.
And Sean.
So, yeah, I don't know that. I think that AI thing would be awesome. I mean, right at the front page, ask a question, right?
Isn't that what your phone can do automatically anyways?
Yeah, but but if it looks in our own zoning bylaws, then we get the setbacks, maybe if there's other restrictions.
I think we could do it on the search and have the search look into the bylaws directly.
Yeah, but then it's just gonna spit out a paragraph as opposed to constructing an answer. That gives you more informa- I mean, that's what AI does, right? It gives you like, you're talking to somebody as opposed to as a reference.
There'll, there's a lot of work behind trying to make that happen.
Yeah, you're gonna have to teach it every time you do something different.
Yeah, but zoning bylaws don't change that often. The calendar, I wish it, I wish it. Pick the calendar. But the zoning bylaws, I mean, they change maybe once a year, you know? So you just retrain, you just throw them back in the hopper to get retrained.
Right.
I think we all know who that would be doing that.
Yeah, Derek, right? So I have to say, I'm kinda surprised at the cost. I expected, what did we put aside for this?
Twenty thousand.
I figured at least that.
We can do two websites.
Yeah, we can. Yeah, I'm I'm, and then if we can spread that out over a five-year term, why not?
I mean, we could, I mean, at at at, I mean, at this, at this point, I mean, we can.
How much are we paying now for?
Well, we're paying an annual fee. I think it's somewhere around twenty nine hundred dollars.
Yours was twenty-three for.
Yeah.
After all the design is done, it's twenty-three, I think.
Yeah.
Do we have any other candidates?
Well, yeah, I I'm sure that there's, um, I'm sure that there's an updated refresh version that Civic Plus. You know, could present as a, as a potential, you know.
We should give them a chance.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I I would like to see other sites too.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I know.
I'm not so real big on Civic Plus right now.
I I'm not happy with them either, but maybe they can redeem themselves.
So nobody will come and complain, why you didn't look at this?
Right. Cuz they they are the big player. I'll try to bring in two more options for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes?
I, um, have talked to Civics Plus several times and they said, yes, they, we have gotten the very bottom of it. But the feeling that I got is to get what this guy, um, offered tonight would be very expensive. Cuz everything they kept saying to me, well, yeah, but that's more money. Yeah, but that's more money, even little things that I wanted to do.
Okay, thank you.
Why wouldn't they have come in a while ago and sold us on some, or you know what I mean, did a presentation? I mean, if they're, they're a company, they're trying to make money, right? They should have like come in and said, hey, I, you got the basic one. Here's what we can do for you.
They did a big game in town too.
They don't care.
They they do most of the sites in Massachusetts and. Yeah, figure if we wanna change something, we wanna update it, we'll ask them.
Not very proactive.
Well, let's.
And that, that's what they kept saying. Well, if you decide you wanna change your website, let us know.
Let's, let's give them a chance. Let's hear their price and now we have competition.
I really, I do really like the interactiveness of the site in how it brings you in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it seems easier to do. I I I think it's much easier to just drag and drop.
Yeah.
With stuff, instead of just having to go in. hyperlink something or.
You have to make copies two, two.
Yeah, it's just, and and then the fact that you're gonna add like just giving somebody a user rights.
Yeah.
It's that's stressful right there because it's like, it never seems to take right away because you're like, okay, why don't they have their rights yet? And then you're going back and forth and you're trying to figure out and you're like, okay, they got their rights now. How did that happen? You know?
Definitely what we have is not from the user.
No, it's, it's not.
That's a fact. And then it costs.
Costs more.
A lot of time consuming for all of us, not in here, including all the boards. It's it's just incredible.
And I I think we all know that it's frustrating for a lot of the boards to add anything to the site.
Yeah, I'm scared. I will be too.
I mean, he was editing stuff right on the page.
Yeah.
Right? Like that big title, he was editing it right there as opposed to go into some other. Box and changing the title that's in like ten point font.
Right.
Right? And and then hitting okay and then having it display again and.
I'm I'm happy because.
View it now and.
Yeah. I'm happy because I see some light is not super expensive, which I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah, so that's that's the biggest thing for me. It's like ten grand. I'm just really sad. And they're gonna pull over all our data.
Yeah, build it for us.
Yeah. Yeah.
And host it.
And it looks like we can do easily do forms like, you know, we've talked a million times about like a building.
It'd be nice to add a form to that. So people could just go on the website and type in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We couldn't do that with Civic.
No.
This guy made it, he did in thirty seconds. It's like, okay, that's just too easy. It can't be that easy. Like you said, you made it look too easy. You can't, can't be that easy.
Okay, so it looks positive. Let's look for the other two. Let's give the Civic a. And not an opportunity only. So we can say, oh, we could save all this money.
Okay.
And find some, find another option too, whoever else.
Next, we have to review and discuss year and departmental line items, transfers, requests with anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, before you this evening are, um, some departmental line item, uh, transfer requests. Some year-end stuff. The FinCom met today. Uh, they voted on all of the transfers that are here before you this evening. I believe there's seven of them. Um, and, um, from various departments, um, I can certainly go through them. Uh, one by one, if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, just to kinda give you an idea of, you know, what they're about.
Yeah, that that way it stays on the record.
Okay. Uh, so the first one before you this evening, uh, I believe in your packet is, uh, is a request that I I put forward. Uh, from the Board of Selectmen, uh, which is a, um, this was a a warrant article. Uh, for, um, the special, but the, uh, local contractor was able to get us in sooner. Uh, and to s- to, uh, get this work started sooner. Um, so instead of having to have this, uh, local contractor wait for payment until June. Um, uh, I I'm putting forward a request to address. The emergency, uh, lighting and exit, uh, lighting that that has failed. Uh, inspection, uh, by our, uh, Encore Fire Protection, who comes in and inspects us. Uh, every year, uh, it failed in, uh, December of, uh, of this year, of the last year. And so to take care of this, um, the the company had to change out, uh, twenty, uh, one. Um, uh, emergency exit, uh, lighting in and, uh, in in signs. Um, in the building, um, uh, to make it compliant. It did not pass the. The ninety-minute test as required, um, the current, uh, system not passed the ninety-minute test. Um, so it it failed. So to get that taken care of, um, uh, it's eight thousand nine hundred, uh, forty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Uh, it contacted the, um, the treasurer. Uh, there's a surplus in the health insurance. Uh, so we're proposing to take this, uh, from health insurance to the shepherd purchase account, uh, to pay for this, um, uh, the install. It was approved by the FinCom. Oh, we signed the wrong spot.
One of them all.
Oh, okay, alright. So.
Good to me.
Yeah.
So that 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 was the first request there. Um, the second request is, uh, from the Board of Assessors. Uh, there was an error in, um, in one of the articles at the fall special. And, uh, the error was transferring money, uh, from the, um, assessor salary, uh, line. Um, it should not have gotten transferred, uh, to pay the stipend of the, um, of the assessors. So, uh, they're looking to transfer back into that line. Um, so, um, it is for three thousand two hundred. Uh, and fifty dollars, uh, and that's gonna be transferring it back from the assistant sali- uh, assistant assessor salary to the. Uh, assessor salary line.
It was approved by FinCom?
Yeah. The next one, uh, is from the Board of Selectmen, um, after having a discussion with Karen and, um, making, uh. Uh, getting some updates from Entree because we added some additional, uh, computers to our monitoring. Um, uh, because of the new computer project, um, we are going to be short. Um, with some money for, um, for the last, uh, month for, uh, some of the monitoring. Um, so she had recommended, uh, putting in six hundred dollars, uh, to cover us, uh, until the end of the fiscal year. Uh, for the additional support. We're gonna be taking it from Town Hall Maintenance, uh, and putting it into, uh, Information Technology Services. Okay. The next one is also, uh, from the Board of Selectmen is a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, after speaking with Karen, uh, it looks like there was a, um, a miscalculation. Uh, on an increase for one of the cell, uh, towers, uh, for the radio infrastructure. Uh, on our, um, what we, uh, pay a month, uh, just by a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, so to get us to our our last payment, uh, for the end of the fiscal year. Uh, we're, we're looking to, uh, transfer, uh, Town Hall, uh, repair and maintenance. Um, a hundred and fifty dollars to American Tower to pay for that lease.
Okay.
The, um, the other, um, item is is is, uh, from our veterans agent. Um, our veterans agent, um, who we all know, uh, is doing a great job. Um, she's new to town. She didn't, she she's not new to the job. She's done veterans work in several other communities. Um, but she was new to how our timing of our budget process is. And she was, um, hoping that, um, she has some money in her, um, expense account. Um, that she would like to transfer to, uh, her stipend account or her salary. Um, she, that salary, um, has not seen an increase in quite some time. Um, it's a, it's a small stipend that the town pays. Um, and she wasn't aware that our budget process had already started, um, when she had, uh, uh, came on and back in the fall. Um, so she's looking to transfer five hundred dollars into her, um. Into her, uh, stipend line, salary line, uh, for an adjustment in in this year's, uh, stipend. Um, I I don't think it's, 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 uh, you know, much of an ask. Um, you know, I think the person is doing a great job. Um, and it is now budgeted for correctly for fiscal year twenty-six. So. Uh, in twenty-six, the adjustment will be there. It's just giving an adjustment for fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, so essentially she gave herself a raise. I just, just the facts. And that's okay without any kind of town meeting thing or?
It 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 it, you know, typically what would happen is is that these things would get budgeted for during the budget process.
And then get approved.
And get approved at town meeting. There is a surplus that is in her expense account that, you know, because she's new and she didn't realize the timeframe of the budget process that we have here, she's asking the board if they would be okay with transferring that now to, to, to get that because she was late in, in submitting something for fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay. I'm okay with it. I'm okay. I just, not as a regular practice, though.
Not as a regular practice.
Because like, I could underspend in one line item and say, ooh, can we move up the salaries this year?
Right.
Yeah, so, it's a dangerous precedent.
And, and the reason, yes. The reason is that, that, that this is being done is she wasn't aware of, she's new. She wasn't aware of the timeframe of the budget process. Now, she's clearly aware of that, and, and now it's been properly budgeted for moving forward.
All right.
The, the other one is from the accounting, accountant's office for five hundred dollars. That is a, a request for five hundred dollars from the assistant salary line to the actuarial line. And that is to pay for an actuarial analysis that needed to be done as part of our, as part of our, this year's audit because of the fact that we had opened an OPEB trust fund account. So, because of a, the OPEB trust account that we adopted in fiscal year twenty-four, there has to be some actuarial work that needs to be done. In USI, who currently does our actuarial work, charges an additional fee for OPEB work. And so, now that we have established OPEB trust account, we didn't, we were not aware of the fact that they would charge this additional fee. So, we need to pay this. Now, moving forward, obviously, we'll know to budget for this. And the final one from the accountant is for two thousand dollars from the assistant salary, assistant accountant's salary line to the purchase service salary line. And that is for, to purchase some office supplies that are needed for the office. They, they wanted to purchase a standing desk and some folders for accounts payable, as well as for two trainings. One, and which she had already, we had already approved for, which was UMass School. The Massachusetts Municipal Accountants Association has a school in March, and that is also when they take a test for the accountants to get certified. And the accountant had paid for it out of her own pocket, about six hundred and two dollars and forty cents. That's up at UMass Amherst. She's seeking reimbursement on that, as well as to participate in a June conference by the same association, and, and the expenses associated with that.
Can I make a suggestion on this form?
Sure.
So, it gets approved by FinCom first?
Typically, yep, yep.
They should be, FinCom ended up signing this in the Board of Selectmen line, but it makes sense where they signed it because they go first?
Sure, yep.
Could we just flip those two, so it, it flows better?
Sure, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to cross off the line here, and, right, the Board of Selectmen underneath. Right, right. The signature line. They signed in the wrong line.
Yeah, they signed in the wrong line. But it makes sense, though. They go first, so they should have the upper section that we go, so we should have the lower one.
Sure.
And then accounting never signed her one.
She's got, yeah, she signed this one. I, I copied it a long time.
Oh, okay, all right. So, we have the one that she signed?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'm good with all the requests.
Those are all of them, and I hope there's no more. So, I think that there's, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, there's a total of seven, seven requests.
I'm good with that.
I'll make a motion to approve the year-end departmental line item transfer request as presented by the town administrator and authorize the chair to sign.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Rich Aihawker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
So, I will have you sign the originals. The chair signs in the chair spot, but the other two board members initial in the other spot. I can have you do that after the meeting, if you'd like.
Yep.
Continuing. Acceptance of a state grant from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs in the amount of five fifty thousand dollars for the town's master plan phase two. No match required, and to authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, we were notified by the state last week that we received a grant for fifty thousand dollars to continue on for phase two of the town's master plan. As you know, we've been working with CMRPC on phase one. It was identified through this department at the state that we could apply for funding for phase two. We initially worked with CMRPC on phase one. We continued to work with them on phase two, and they helped us with the application as well, assisted us with the application, and we were, we were awarded it just last week. So, before you this evening, we're, 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 we're for the acceptance of it and to authorize me to sign on behalf of the town for the, for the, for the, for the grant, and so we can get going on phase two. Any questions?
Nope, I'm good with it. I'm very happy. We got it.
Yeah, awesome. I'll make a motion to accept the state grant and authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town.
We hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Rich Aihawker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Review and discuss a request from the Board of Health to refer twenty-six Old Westbrookfield Road to Town Council for legal action.
So, I received a request from the Board of Health for a problem property, which is twenty-six Old Westbrookfield Road. And they have documentation of about two hundred pages worth of documentation on this problem, problem property. And they've written up the property several times. It seems as though that it's a rental property, and there's obviously a landlord and tenants. And the landlord is blaming the tenants, and the tenants are blaming the landlord. And so, but it's very clear to me and to the Board of Health that there, nobody's maintaining the property. There's trash on the, around the property. The dumpster's always overflowing. There's junk and lit, and, and, and litter around the property. There's several issues on the interior of the property. You know, they are requesting that the town take this to, to court. Now, obviously, that would cost the town some money to do that. And so, I had, had initial conversation with Jeff Blake last week. And initially, he is going to review all the complaints and the files and everything and, and write up a, a letter to the, to the, to the owner of the property and to put them on notice to, to these violations. Now, if they don't get a response, or if there's no correction, within fifteen days of Jeff sending out that letter, Jeff would then have to file a lawsuit in housing court. So, that is obviously even more of an expense in a, in a longer period of time. Where we are standing right now, I, 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 you know, I felt pretty comfortable that we could afford, you know, him to write the letter and, you know, put, put him on notice initially. He's doing that. Now, if the board wants to move forward and wants to review the file, or if the board wants to say, go ahead and, and, and go to court, then we can do that. But just knowing that it will be, you know, somewhat of a process and there will be an expense.
So, it looks like the property's for sale on Zillow.
I would really like to clean up some of these properties for landlord issues. So, I'm in favor of going ahead. We had all those problems, well, probably still, on North Street. Right? That cluster of houses there, and it's just, like, we want to live in a nice town, right? And we want to have people who live here live in, like, they don't need to live in squalor and...
You know, and a bunch of kids walk from school to the school every day.
Right past it. It's a very visible property, too, right?
Do they, that property also includes the property on the other side of the road?
I, I don't believe so.
Because it says private property, don't trespassing, and they park there, and they, they do a lot of stuff over there.
I'm not sure if it's the same owner, or it's a different property. But this, this, this one we're, we're talking about is only twenty-six Old Westbrookfield.
What I'm trying to say is that the tenants cross.
Oh, they may, they may.
So, Jim, what happens, say it goes to court, and the, the court can say, clean this up in thirty days, or there's fines, or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, you know, they're gonna make the landlord or the, you know, and, and what, what will eventually happen is that they'll all have to go to court, and if they show up, you know, the tenant is gonna say it's the landlord, and the landlord's gonna say it's the tenants, and, and they're gonna try to find something in the middle, and they're gonna make somebody, or probably ultimately, the, the, the property owner accountable to cleaning it up. You know, there's a ton of violations that they've written up there. There's, you know, like I said, about two hundred pages worth of stuff. They've identified it as a problem property. I just want to establish, like, you know, you know, and, you know, of, you know, you guys being notified that this is happening, that if you want me to continue on with Town Council, that we can. But if we do get into a, you know, a legal court battle, where there's a, you know, lawsuit, and, you know, and people are called in, and the health agent is called in, and the inspectors are called in, you know, it's gonna be a costly process, you know, for legal expense. So, I, I, I authorized Jeff to send out the letter, you know, last week, so he's gonna send the lawyer letter now. Maybe they'll, once they get the lawyer letter, maybe they'll have a change of heart, and you'll see a drastic change. If not, then, you know, the next thing will be a lawsuit.
So, we can do baby steps and go one at a time?
That's the first thing.
Because I'm, I'm just concerned that, one, it's in the middle of our common, so it doesn't look good. Two, if, by looking at the pictures, it will be easy to get on fire or something and then affect more properties, which is not good.
It's listed as a six, is it six family? Six baths, ten bedrooms, five to nine family?
What?
I thought it was a duplex.
Opportunity, this six family in Warren, right off Main Street. It's located closely to many amenities. It says it's a six family.
How, tell, can, does it say the square footages?
Three thousand two hundred and forty.
So, fifteen hundred?
I thought it was a duplex.
A duplex, so it'll be fifteen hundred each, and six families? It goes up...
Is it?
Wow, wow. It's not that big.
There's two on the, on the first floor. You look at that, and there's a door in the middle that goes up, up way the stairs, and I believe there's two apartments on the side.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sure, so they're four, nine, whatever.
Check with the building inspector. I don't think.
That's probably an illegal.
I, I don't think it's, it's, it doesn't fall under the code.
Yeah.
Well, add it to the list.
I, I, I agree with Mr. Aihawker. Is, we, we should, you know, start with the letter, but we have to be able to give our Board of Health enforcement.
Yeah.
And if they just keep on sending letters and they have no teeth in it, then they can never do anything. And you gotta, you gotta hold people example, and the town can't be afraid of suing somebody every single time because we, we'd have these properties everywhere, because nobody would ever do anything.
Yeah.
If we don't enforce it. So, you have to enforce the, the regs.
It would be nice to get a reputation in the area that we don't mess around with.
We don't deal with slum woods.
Yeah. We're, we're gonna do something about this.
If you're gonna live in our town, you're gonna live in, you're gonna, you'll be taken care of.
I'm pretty sure the, the occupancy for that structure is not for six families.
Right.
Yeah.
It's not.
No, I can't believe it would be.
Right.
Like, is...
Huh?
That's six apartment.
Well, it, it's listed as six. They're selling it for five seventy-five.
It's not like that since I've been here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that confirms the occupancy is over the limit.
I mean, that right there.
Might be grandfathered.
Well...
Depends on when it was built and done.
Well, it will be easy to check if there's a, if there's a permit for the six apartments.
Right.
If it's not...
Yeah.
Then it's, it's, it's a no-brainer. It's, it's illegal. Because if that permit, when they should, had to do to have a six-apartment building on a duplex, you know, I've never seen a, a, that load of occupancy that big on such a small dwelling.
If it's only three thousand square feet, I mean, that's, that's not, you know...
That's for two family.
Yeah.
You know, worst case scenario, like a three or four, but six? No. So, what is that, three thousand, like five hundred square feet per family?
Yeah.
You can't live in a, five hundred square feet. It's a one-bedroom condo. It's a one-bedroom apartment.
Yeah, it's almost like a rooming house.
Yeah.
I was enjoying the pictures with all the mold and the food and, and all that.
I, I've driven by there quite a few times, and the dumpster has been overflowing. And that is on the landlord to have that dumped. They pay rent to have it dumped, and whether he agrees that it's full enough or not is not the debate. He still has to have it dumped because rats and stuff will...
So, this room is roughly five hundred feet? No, let's move on here. A family.
Small family.
Yeah, very small family. Okay. Joe, you got a question?
Joe Condra, resident. If I may, a lot of the duplexes in town are being renovated, probably without a permit. If you have an apartment that at one time had six rooms, it's now two, three-room apartments. And it's more than one building, because I've even noticed a few of them on the Main Street in West Warren. It becomes a problem because we have laws that you have to go through the building department to get a permit. It should be inspected by the Board of Health, and a lot of these, I'd like to say, out-of-state investors come in, maybe on a weekend, renovate a duplex into four or five apartments. We still have the problems on North Street with basement apartments, attic apartments, and... And even our inspectors will tell you, some of this stuff should never have been allowed.
Yeah, I think we're opening a big kind of war.
I think we should let the building inspector know about that, and find out if this is supposed to be zoned for six apartments, or what it's zoned for.
Yeah.
Because if he did unauthorized modifications to the building, then that's a whole other issue.
This looks like it's time to empty the dumpster.
Yeah, I've seen it like that a few times.
Unbelievable.
Their cars look like that, too.
Well, if we can, the letter's going out. Let's see if we can get the building inspector there. Maybe we can save the lawsuit, because if he has the power to just say this, you know, condemn it, or something like that, maybe that'll expedite the process.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we just gotta be a little bit careful on that, because if he was to condemn it, I think at this juncture, you know, we would be responsible for putting these people up somewhere.
Why would we be responsible?
Because the town is condemning the property.
But if he did unauthorized work and put those apartments in, and then not permitted, then it's not permitted as a dwelling, and that's on him.
Yeah, I guess...
But he will eventually say, there's not a... I just had to work.
Accessory dwellings?
No, when you, when you build a house or build a...
Occupancy permit?
Occupancy permit. That's the C there. If that building has no occupancy permit, how come they rent it?
Yeah, just ask the building commissioner.
Okay.
Get his thoughts on it. See if he wants to get in.
Send him the, the... Were they selling the...
They're listing it on Zillow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just typed in the address, and Zillow was the first thing that came up. Shows the pictures and everything.
If that's, sounds right, you know, six families there. He will do the numbers right away. Probably not.
Well, it also depends if, they need to have an entrance and an exit. They need two ways of egress out of the house.
Okay. Let's do baby steps.
Okay.
You good?
I couldn't get that thing back on.
Next, we have review and...
Thank you.
Oh, it says we have to make a motion.
Do we need to make a motion?
Do we need a motion for that?
If you want to, you know, after, after the first legal letter goes out, if you wanna either just bring it back, or if you want it to go to further legal action if there's no response.
I think we're fine with that, right?
Yeah, just give us a...
Heads up?
Yeah, let us know.
Next, we have review and discuss a request from highway surveyor to hire temporary part-time staff to assist with incoming road construction projects.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So before you this evening is just a draft of something that I put together. The highway surveyor had, had came to see me a little bit ago, a few weeks ago, with a need to bring in some support temporarily to address some of the many road construction projects that are going on in and around town. You know, and one in particular he had highlighted was the Route nineteen project that is gonna be done by the state. However, he is responsible for doing some prep work to that, and is gonna require some additional staff. You know, I was just trying to put something together, you know, as a, as some type of MOU, memorandum of understanding, between the board and the highway department. Because, you know, historically, these types of items have gone on an annual town meeting warrant. And I had some discussions individually with each of you. And, you know, you had both, everybody had indicated that, you know, they wanna try to figure out a way to help, you know, some did, and, you know, but with some type of, you know, conditions to be placed on it. So, you know, this is a draft of something that I put together. You know, Jeremy didn't have much time to look at it, because I just finished it today in between some things. So he may want some modifications. He may talk to you about it tonight. There may be some further discussion on it. But, you know, that's, was his initial request, was to be able to have some flexibility until the end of the fiscal year. He has a position that has been open since last June that we just recently are in the process of filling. He is bringing forward a candidate, hopefully, as, hopefully, if everything goes well with the physical and drug screen, that we'll be bringing forward a candidate next week for the full-time position. So there is some surplus money available in the salaries. However, those salaries are dedicated to individuals that are currently within the department. And that's how that budget is drafted every year. Those salaries are assigned to individual staff members that are given to the FinCom as part of his salaries. So yes, all of the salaries are lumped together in one line, but individually, they are given to the FinCom by, you know, individual titles that people that hold those positions. So, you know, you know, it is a, you know, a tough predicament to be in, because work needs to get done. And, you know, I think everybody wants to make sure work continues and moves on, and we have, you know, progression. So I had put together this draft. You can discuss it, you can make some changes to it, however you'd like. I think Jeremy's on the call to offer any comments that he may have.
Good evening, everybody. Jeremy Olson, highway surveyor. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, Jim, Jim basically touched upon a conversation we had had, something ongoing. The reality here is, this is actually a process that we've been doing as long as I've been an employee at the highway department. Frequently, you know, it's not just our department. It's virtually every town in the state has issues with staffing in municipalities and DPWs. And the state allows us a lot of flexibility in that, because they know staffing is a problem. So we have basically used part-time, on-call employees throughout the year, not just in the winter, and this for snow and ice, but also spring, summer, and fall, to fill in gaps where you're missing employees. Actually, the state encourages it. They do the same thing, but they basically only do it in the winter. So with that being said, it's like I said, this is something that I personally have been doing for six years. We did it last summer on Coy Hill. These same two employees, Raymond Blaze and Roger Gagnon, both are at, like, on-call. If we need you, we use you. If we don't, if I give you an hour of work, or twenty hours of work, or zero work, they know that's the agreement. They know they're non-benefit employees. They signed that as, as on-call employees for the town. So hours and benefits don't really apply to their position, as I did clear that with the Attorney General's Office of the State, because they, Mass DOT does this. Everybody does this in the winter. We have sixteen months, or sixteen weeks of winter generally, where on-call employees have to operate without restrictions, because sometimes we have nineteen to twenty-five hours in one snowstorm, and there's usually multiple events within a week. So nineteen-hour restriction is for, when you're a very specific, you know, obviously you fill a role as a certain employee, but on-call employees are very flexible, and it's meant to be that way. Again, this is not really something that I would have normally discussed. Mr. Farrar felt, you know, that he was had concern whether these guys, you know, we could use the money to, for them. Again, we have for at least ten years, because I know we've done it before I had this position. We used part-time, on-call people to fill in gaps where we were missing full-time employees. So I basically just wanted to clear this with you guys, make sure everybody's on board, they understand this is a process we've been doing for a long time. It's only when there are funds available within payroll that I'm able to use this. And this year, we did have a full-time employee from August through to, just before December, basically. And then that position's been voided. So I have thirty thousand dollars in surplus money in, within our payroll budget. So there is no harm, there's, everybody's getting their paychecks. This money is just gonna be turned back over to the town at the end of the fiscal year if I don't bring these employees in. And it'll, unfortunately, it'll put us way behind in the construction season, which we're already falling behind as we speak, just because things are not lining up, and there's so much work going on. So, and please, feedback, whatever you guys want. I'll answer any questions. But this is something that I definitely need to have in place. And then I'm actually asking for extra money within my budget for next year. It's an article on the, on the town floor at the upcoming meeting, to put aside some extra money just for these type of employees to help with construction projects. But that's for next fiscal year. This is, I'm talking about between now and June thirtieth. What do you guys think?
I'm good with it.
So I, I understand the work has to get done. And I understand Mr. Olson's been doing this previously. Just because we've done something previously doesn't mean it's right. The town approves new positions when we hire new positions. I understand there's an exception for highway to a limit for seasonal employees for snow removal. And basically, they get hired by the town, and whenever we have a big snow event, Jeremy calls them all out, and, hey, everybody get out there, and we need plows to get the roads cleaned. We couldn't get the roads cleaned if we didn't have that staff and have those additional people to do that. I think this is a little different, because he's looking for a part-time employee, not a seasonal employee. And that, that really should be going through town meeting and getting approved by the town to do, go through FinCom. And like Mr. Farrar did say, when we do payroll, that payroll is dedicated to those employees. It's not a general fund. It's not a fund to pay anybody. It's a fund to pay those employees. And those employees in those positions are getting paid that specific salary for that area. And I just think it's a slippery slope that we're getting into. I do wanna help Jeremy. I, I just, I don't know if this is the right way to do it. It should have been requested at town meeting for part-time staff. If he needs to hire three positions, or maybe hire the full-time guy, get the full-time guy in there and have him doing the work, and you won't have to hire two or three part-time guys. You have the full-time guy, which is already paid, the money's there for him. You know, it just... That, that's my opinion. It just seems to be a slippery slope. Because, yes, it's authorized for snow removal, but that's a different situation. It's a seasonal event, and it's weather-related, and they're only called in for that storm. So it's not like we're putting them on the books, so we're hiring them. Because are they paying taxes? We paying taxes for them and everything, too?
Oh, yeah.
So, so they have to come into payroll?
Oh, they're on payroll, they would have to be on payroll.
Yeah, so being that situation...
They've been on payroll for years. These are not new employees.
So Roger Gagnon was hired last year to share hours with another employee.
So, you know, he, that, that was his, that was his condition of his employment, that he's sharing hours that maybe, you know, somebody else didn't use, who was in the part-time category, you know? For that nineteen, that nineteen hours, which is a part-time employee...
Right.
Was split up between the two of them.
Two of them, right.
I don't, Ray Blaze must have been hired years prior to me, right, Jeremy?
He was our foreman for twenty-seven years, retired, and stayed on as an on-call employee for the town of Warren now, since he retired. So he has been utilized for multiple reasons, whether it be snow and ice events to help remove snow, or whether it be storm damage relief. We brought him in for several weeks back in July and August, September, October of 2021. Again, he's come in, he works projects from time to time as the town needs them. Again, this is not a slippery slope. This is not brand-new. This is something that has been happening statewide for a very long time. And again, this is not, it's not like we're creating a new position. This is money that is not getting used. It would be a disservice to the town if I wasn't to put this money to good use, to turn around and make positive changes and, and help projects advance at a very low cost to the town, especially with something that is legal to do. Again, anybody wants to call the Attorney General and discuss this, this is very open. This is a conversation that a lot of towns have, because shorting, shortage of staff is very common for DPWs statewide. It's not just Warren, this is everywhere. And I do not need an extra full-time employee, because a full-time employee is great, but that's one person. And now I'm looking to bring in a couple of people for short periods of time, very legal. I have the budget, I have the funding, everything's perfectly across the board. We pay taxes, they pay taxes. They already collect full benefits as retired employees. So if we actually use them too much, it would physically hurt their retirement before it would negatively affect the town. So even with that being stated, which that's a very thing, the state actually raised the amount of money they could come back and make as part-time employees for the town, as on-call employees, because the state understands that towns are struggling with employment. So again, this isn't new. This isn't something like I just pulled out of a hat. It's something that's ongoing and been ongoing for a long time. I just wanted to make sure that, because Mr. Farrar wasn't aware of this type of activities and this type of work, because he's not experienced in this sector, as nor are you, gentlemen, experienced in what we do, this is not new. But we wanted to make sure everybody knows what's going on here, so there's no surprises. And that it's really, it's a matter of, if you decide not to allow it, then, well, I guess it's just gonna hurt the town for whatever reason, I don't know. But that's up to you.
So why can't we do something like this on a ten ninety-nine basis instead of a W-2? You would hire these people as needed, and you'd issue them a ten ninety-nine at the end of the year.
They're already on the books.
Well, but, but, I mean, just generic, in the, even in the future. So, you know, I don't know. You could hire me to do like ten hours of work one week, and you just give me a ten ninety-nine?
You're paying them out of a salary line. So you're not paying them out of an expense account.
Okay, so a ten ninety-nine would come out of expense?
Yeah, I would have to, yeah.
Okay, but I mean, it is...
You deal with the issues of like, full-time versus part-time versus benefits versus all that?
So a ten ninety-nine would be like a contractor, so you're gonna hire somebody? So a ten ninety-nine would be like a contractor, so you're gonna hire somebody, but that would be out of an expense account, so.
Okay.
The 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 money that's available would be available to pay these people out of a salary line account.
Right, yeah, I'm just, I mean, it's different than this issue, but I just wonder if it would make all this simpler in the future.
It'd be more expensive. In the long run, doing that, because whenever you're hiring outside vendors. The town requirements for their insurance and then because they're an outside vendor. You would have to pay them prevailing wage on top of that, where these are in-house employees that get paid at in-house rates. To do in-house work, which is why you're combining two people at less than fifty dollars an hour for the two of them to be on staff. Who they are already on staff, but again, it costs the town less than fifty dollars an hour. Versus hiring two vendors, which would probably, you know, you're talking about an operator, there's at least ninety to a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. Uh a truck driver can prevailing wage, you're looking at seventy-five to eighty-five dollars an hour. And then you can ten ninety-nine them, but again, you're spending what you're going the long way to spend a lot more money. And then you're you have outside people, so it's they're not, they they don't have the flexibility. Cause these guys, if I need them for five hours tomorrow. They say, yep, I can show up for five hours tomorrow, boom, they come in, they work five hours, hey, I don't need you the rest of the week. Uh I'll call you next week if I need you, hey, I need you for two days next week, are you available? Uh Wednesday and Thursday from seven to three. And yes or no, well, if no, then oh well, maybe I get one of them, maybe I get both of them. But that's the difference, it's totally different, these guys are on the books a hundred percent already. So it's not spending salary money on non-non-employees, they are already on-the-book employees. And the state does not, does not make a difference whether it is coming in for a winter snow and ice activity. Or whether it is a summer activity, a construction project, an emergency repair per project. I mean, we could have a road washout and I can call these guys in to help for two weeks to help put that road back together. It is one hundred percent legal as long as I have money in the budget, it's not deficit spending. And I have money in salary, which can cover those two gentlemen's salary for whatever period of time they worked for. It's the same, snow and ice, we have a salaries line item for snow and ice. That pays these seasonal on-call employees, it's the same thing, it just comes out of a different line item, but it's called. Seat, snow and ice salaries, that's the difference. This is highway department salary, so it's it's not like we're spending money where we shouldn't be. We can audit this all day long and the state has cleared this of many audits in the past with no issues. So again, we're not asking for something new, I'm just informing you, it's something we've been doing and would like to continue to do.
So my my response is.
Yes, they've been doing it. Doesn't mean that it's it's legal. I know.
On the state, it is.
So that's my question is, if it is legal, I'm okay with it. But I wanna know if they they can legally do this.
So yes, Jeremy is correct, the board can authorize if they want to 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 for these positions. Because there's extra money, however, town council has said. That if these individuals work over nineteen hours a week, they're entitled to health insurance benefits. Now, I understand that 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 you know, these individuals are retired, but. Again, if you're working over nineteen hours a week, you're entitled to health insurance.
Okay, so we just restrict them to nineteen hours?
That's not true. Cause you can work way over nineteen hours a week all winter long and we do not have to pay you benefits. As long as you understand you are a non-benefit on-call employee. I mean, I have part-timers that put in way more than nineteen hours consecutive week after week after week, just this winter. And we do not have to pay them benefits because they know they're they they signed up. For a non-benefit position that is on-call, the nineteen hours only applies if they're a consistent. Every-week employee, that's where the nineteen hours comes in. If they're an on-call employee, that absolutely does not apply, otherwise. We'd be paying benefits to five employees that are on-call part-time employees for their work this winter. And we don't have to legally, there is no obligation to pay them benefits because of the position they hold. They know it could be two hours this week, twenty-two hours next week, no hours the following week. Fifty hours the week after that, which we'd still have to pay them overtime. But there's no benefits tied to that, you do not pay them health insurance. Cause otherwise, every town in the state would be in trouble because they virtually all use. On-call employees for way more than nineteen hours a week consistently for sixteen weeks of winter. So again, if those rules do not apply when the when the purpose of this position is on-call. It's not guaranteed and they know that.
So I I would change the wording then. So Roger Gagnon and Raymond Blaze on a uh or for on-call part-time basis.
Perfect.
And get rid of the nineteen-hour thing. And then it's clear.
I I'm just, I I'm just saying that that's what Tim Zessen had said, so.
Yeah, I I would get clarification if that's for on-call employees. Because again, if we, all it takes is one of them to turn around and. Get a hair across their butt and say, you know something, I've been doing this for you guys for years. You didn't pay me these benefits and I'm filing a labor law complaint and I'm suing the town. And then we could have be responsible for paying them all back.
Jeremy, do you set up some sort of contract, do they sign like a letter, do they sign a contract that says they understand?
They did when they were hired for the position, they all know that it's an on-call position with no benefits. It's made very clear when they signed up, when they took the jobs.
Okay.
Yeah, just because somebody signs something, that they understand that, that doesn't defeat the law. What the law states is different.
Why is it that what is still in the state then David and every other town around, cause we all do the same thing? No, there's no lawsuits, there's no precedent set here that these guys ever get benefits, not when they're on-call.
Okay, we we just wanna make sure we don't get sued.
Well, let's go ahead, du- double, triple, quadruple check it, cause I did. I did for this discussion of this purpose right now tonight. I did a ton of research for months and months on this. Because we ran into this issue last summer and I was not gonna run into it again this year. Because again, it by by putting the brakes on this, it's actually physically costing this town. A lot of money that we're gonna have to pay out of other accounts to cover these lab- this this work, these laborers. And I go, why are we going the long way to spend more money? When I'm showing you that a hundred percent legally, you do not have to do that. The state is very intentional in setting it up like this, because they understand. The situation when it comes how difficult it is for employment of highway departments, of DPWs across the board. I could give you twenty towns that all have openings all the time, full-time. And you know, and we're one of them up until hopefully next week, that'll be filled. So it's common.
This could wait till next Thursday.
Sure, sure.
If you can, if you can get clarification from legal and just make sure that we can do this, if we can do it, I'm good with it. But if if legal comes in and says, no, you can't do that and you're gonna get in trouble. We might wanna take that with an air of caution, because they're the ones that are gonna have to defend us in the end. And if they tell us, no, don't do this anymore. How can they defend that? But if they say, you're good as a, but you're gonna do, you know, word it this way.
Right.
Maybe it's just changing some wording.
Right.
Um and.
And I think.
The contract that um Mister Olson's having him sign, I would make sure that Tim looks at that. Because laws change.
Right.
And just because it was legal ten years ago, doesn't mean it's legal net right now.
Right, um since I've been here, um I we haven't had many hires, uh new hires for um for highway. So I I'm not aware of, you know, the um the offer or the the agreement that Jeremy um has had him sign in the past. But you know, with regards to, you know, this on-call stuff. I think it would also, you know, would be helpful in in just to have this aired out. And 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 give us some clear direction, because on the wage scale, there's nothing that says on-call employees. Get paid this or this is, you know, it doesn't have that. Um and so um you know, I think that would be, you know, be helpful. Once we're going through this process to come up with something, because obviously we wanna get these projects done and we wanna be able to help. Uh highway out with the staffing they need and we just wanna make sure that we can do it appropriately.
Yeah, we might just have to approve like a bylaw or get a bylaw approved, put adding it into the personnel bylaws. Saying highway can hire so many on-call employees and whether it's creating another line item for him.
Well, that's what he's done, that's what he's done.
I was gonna say, he's gonna, he's gonna cure the problem in the next budget.
And the annual budget, yeah, there's an article on for the annual.
All we're doing here is just letting him do this for the next month.
Getting him till June thirtieth.
Next thirty days, so, well, uh sixty days.
Yeah, getting him to June thirtieth, so.
That's what I don't have a problem with, we're gonna say, fine, for the next sixty days, you've got the money. You can't overspend, you can't pull it from another account, it's to do this specific thing. For sixty days and then he's already got the article on to deal with it.
And because and just because, you know, these people are on-call. You know, these people have gone through it, but any future on-call people. You know, they have to go through the same process as a regular employee, so they have to get a a pre-employment physical, a drug screen. You know, they have to go through the whole onboarding process, just like we do with new employees, they have the same process too. Um so um you know, that's important too. But I think we can get there and I think we can work it out, um it's just fine-tuning it a little bit.
Yeah, I just I just worry about liability, especially in construction, cause if one of these guys gets hurt, blows out his back or something. I was working for the town of Warren. Then now we gotta pay what? You can't say, well, we we're not gonna pay you, well, it's gonna sue our insurance company now. You know, cause somebody gotta pay for his medical bills. If they haven't had a pre-employment physical, how do we know it's not a previous condition? There's there's a lot of what-ifs when you do things like this and I understand the pressure. And it's easy to collapse the pressure because you wanna get the jobs done, but we wanna get them done right. You you wanna make sure what you're doing is legal and you wanna make sure the people that are doing it can do it. Okay, they're doing it right, I'm sure they're more than capable, they've worked for the town previously. I I understand that, that's fine, but it seems like we're circumventing the system here to do this and it's. Doing highway work is not an easy job, that's a tough job, you know, there's a lot of lifting, there's moving heavy equipment. I I think we're setting up the town for, just because we've done it in the past. Doesn't mean we should keep on doing something like this. Um and I wanna see Jeremy do the work, I want him to have the people, I want him to have as many people as he can to do what he needs to do. I just want it done right. So I I just wanna know, can we legally do this? And are these guys, should we be having these guys go through pre- pre-employment physicals?
They already have, they both of them have, they they both through been through the wringer. Raymond Blaze, again, worked for the town for twenty-seven years before he retired as the foreman. For twenty-seven years, he is one of our best operators by far. Roger Gagnon worked for the town of Brimfield Highway Department for thirty or so years, plus worked construction prior. These guys have a combined construction talent of over for over eighty years combined. I go, they understand this business better than almost everybody. They are, one it one is an equipment operator and one is a premium truck driver. And that is all I ask these two gentlemen to do and they do it very well. So again, you have to un- you have to trust me that I understand what I'm doing with these employees, number one. I would never put an employee in a position to get hurt, I go, that is just not what I do, I understand my my people better than anyone. And again, they know what it's like, cause they've done this work forever, so. They know what it is when they get hurt, cause they've been hurt, they 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 know what it is, what they go through, again. They all have full medical benefits, one of them, his medical benefits are already paid by the town of Warren. As his retired benefits, he rides on our insurance along with Medicare. Uh the other ones, he rides on Brimfield's insurance and then uh with Medicare, obviously, cause they're both retired and over the age of. You know, in their late sixties, one's in his early seventies. But again, if we got new employees to cover these spots, they would have to go through all the pre- pre-employment stuff. That Roger just went through last year and uh Nathaniel uh Lanu went for through for me uh the year before that when I brought him in for seasonal help. Uh they all go through this, those are just two examples that Mister Farrar has been with me on as we hired in new people. So nobody's getting hired in an illegal way, nobody's working in a way that's unsafe. And again, uh you guys have really gotta understand, you're in very good hands when you're when I'm running this department. I've never put us in a bad spot, I would never put the town in any position but a positive position. And I've done that consecutively for six years and running unopposed for another three more years. So I I I would say the town has a lot of confidence in me on top of that. So please show me you have confidence in me and stand behind me and support me. And again, like Rich said, I'm only asking for sixty days, then we're putting this on the town floor and we can have this discussion with the voters. So then it'll completely take it out of your hands, so you'll never even have to worry about it again. But yes, go ahead, go through legal, uh get confirmation that on-call employees that are they they're not guaranteed any time, they're not guaranteed anything. And they're definitely not guaranteed benefits, no matter how many hours they work.
So Jeremy, I think we all trust.
That's not the issue and it's not the fact that you can't get things done, you absolutely can. We we talk highly about you all the time and your people, that's not the issue at all. We just gotta make sure that we protect the town overall in all its interests.
I protect the town too, David, I I'm probably first in line here, I I do more things to protect the town of Warren. I think than anyone has, definitely in my department for a very long time. So again, I always have the best interest of the town in my mind and in my heart. And that's why I'm here, because believe me, I could do this job a lot of other places and they would appreciate it as much as everyone here does. And that's why I love this town, I'm staying here, I'm committed here and I wanna continue to do great things going forward. And all I want is to understand that we're doing things correct. Uh again, I do not have any issues with legal going over this again. Again, they can, they're making recommendations and go by the state standards and the state has zero issues with this. So I I think if the state's not worried about getting sued, why are we? That's all I'm wondering, is where is this un- uncertainty coming from? So that's all.
So Jeremy, are you okay that if we hold on to next week and the board decides, I I don't.
Yeah, these guys, I don't have plans. Them to start next week, but by the following week, I'm bringing them in for at least a couple of days. Cause I absolutely cannot wait any longer, I need their help. Cause we are getting it, the the clock is ticking, the days are disappearing. And the state's gonna be showing up with their contractors to start ripping up Route nineteen. And I need to have all the roadsides prepared for when they come to do this. So it's kinda one of those deals, you don't wanna fix the edges of the road after they already paved the new road. Cause then you're in risk of doing a lot of damage to the new road and I do not want that happening.
Okay, so to be fair enough with everyone, uh we'll do everything to help you out. Uh we trust you, we we trust you a hundred and ten percent and uh hopefully the board can help you next week.
All right, thank you guys very much. All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, just get clarification, we'll make sure it's, it's good. Next we have warrants and bills.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a little different, uh, this evening, uh, so, um, if, uh, David did, uh, bills?
Could you wrote it smaller?
Sorry.
That's font six, oh, you need glass?
That's a six font? That's not even a six font. Okay, um, where's the? You're not making out to be a very good Karen. Do we have any payroll?
No, we, we don't have, we don't have those yet. Those will be next week. Just, this is just.
So this is all we have?
Just bills, yep.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion for the following bills. Turley Publishing for a hundred and eighty dollars, KP Law for six hundred and five dollars and ninety-five cents, KP Law for five hundred and seventy-five dollars, Warren Electrical Contractors for eight thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-six cents, WB Mason for two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents, James Dusty for posting the town meeting warrant for twenty dollars, uh, SBA Structures LLC, that's for one thousand eight hundred and six dollars and forty-seven cents, Handbin Communication for fifteen hundred dollars, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission for five thousand five hundred dollars, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission again for fifteen hundred dollars.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Or in favor?
David Dufresne, I.
Rich Ahaaker, I.
David, I.
You just have to sign that, that one.
Should I make my signature very small?
Yeah. Thank you.
Good, now we get to town administration reports.
Now we got meet, meeting minutes, right?
Uh, there's no meeting minutes for approval as of yet.
So now it's time for the town administration report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a couple of things I'd like to report to the board, uh, that's been happening, uh, this week. Thank you. Um, so, uh, as alluded to in, in previous conversations, uh, we started the onboarding process, uh, for, uh, a gentleman by the name of Jacob Provost. Um, he, uh, is, uh, coming from Munson. Um, he is, um, worked for the town of Munson, uh, the DPW. Um, we have, um, an tentative, um, date of next week, uh, to bring him before the board, um, conditioning that, uh, he, uh, passes all of the requirements, uh, which we're hopeful for, and we're hopeful to bring, uh, him, uh, before the board for consideration at next week's meeting. Uh, this week I also, uh, worked with, uh, Jeremy, John O'Leary from CMRPC, uh, and, um, Waterford Design Group. Um, we did, uh, our, um, our kickoff for engineering for River and Central Street and West Warren on Tuesday. Um, so we, uh, we toured those two, uh, sites and, and, and looked at, uh, the engineering, uh, project that, uh, has been awarded, uh, to them, uh, through, um, through our CDBG funds, um, and that's for, uh, River and Central Street. Um, they are, um, they are eager to get started on that, um, and I think you're gonna see some, some really, uh, unique, uh, design and some engineering work come about that. This week also started at the, uh, Senior Center. Uh, on Wednesday, yesterday, we had the crane come in. Um, I, I wanted to get down there for the crane. Um, I was there for, you know, maybe ten minutes, fifteen minutes later, then when the crane was there, it was in and out. It was, I mean, it was gone in and out. The crane was there, uh, it lowered the, uh, the heat pump, it took out the old heating system, it lowered the new heating system in. Um, the, um, the contractors are, are putting it all together, hooking it up. I believe they finished that, uh, process today. Um, so, uh, the new, uh, the new heat pumps are installed, uh, they are, um, hooked up. Tomorrow, we are going to have the final, um, insulation of the, uh, weatherization project at the Senior Center. So tomorrow the Senior Center is closed. Um, they are, uh, blowing insulation, uh, through the building, um, uh, to, to weatherize it some more for some, with some, some additional heat, uh, uh, and to capture some more energy in the building. Uh, they are gonna be coming and they'll finish up that project. So, that project with the weatherization, the heat pumps, the weatherization of this building is, is, is gonna be completed by the end of this week. So, um, that is over two hundred thousand dollars of investment that has been made between this building and the Senior Center, all on a state grant from Green Communities. So that project will be complete. Um, we are, um, in line to start the roofing project the week of May twelfth. Um, so that project, uh, we're, we're getting, um, getting that done, um, um, very soon. Um, and, um, I also, uh, have been working with, um, CMRPC. Um, they are eager to work with us on, uh, housing production plan, um, and I plan on applying for the One Stop for Growth, um, grant that is, is, is now open, I think as of today, um, for a housing production plan, um, in CMRPC, uh, and, and the town will be partnering together on that. I think that was a recommendation from CDAC. Um, I will be applying for, for that grant, uh, along with some consultation with CMRPC in the next few weeks in time to, to get that on. We're hoping to get funded for that. Um, we anticipate there may be a small match requirement, um, but we do have our select and matching grants that we budget for every year, so we can, um, use some of that to, to make our, um, application a little bit more attractive. Um, so we're hoping to get that done. Um, one of the things that we're looking at, at the housing production plan, and I mentioned this to Sarah, um, was on this particular project, um, you know, I know Master Plan has been running through, um, you know, CDAC and, 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 and some stuff, working with, uh, Planning Board. Um, you know, I know we've worked with CDAC on a few other things, um, but it may be to some benefit for the town to try to get on a housing production plan, maybe, um, a different group of people to give a different perspective of things. Um, you know, uh, whether it be, um, you know, seniors, uh, that, that have housing, you know, challenges, um, you know, business owners that, that may have some type of, you know, um, you know, housing needs, uh, for their businesses, or, you know, some type of housing, um, group, maybe it's people, uh, up at, 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 at the Housing Authority, uh, to get some more perspective of things, to form a committee. Uh, so when we have the housing production plan, that some of these ideas can be bounced off with people that, uh, you know, have a need for housing or, or are involved in the housing, um, market in some way, um, maybe getting a realtor involved, um, some type of, um, of, of a different group from a different perspective. I know we've used CDAC and CDAC's a great group. I know we use Planning Board and they're a great group, but, you know, at some point you may want to get a different perspective of things from some, try to at least put a different perspective for, for a group together. And that's what we were talking about with Sarah, and she thought that would be an excellent idea to try to get some additional, you know, feedback and some additional group.
Take a builder too.
A builder, you know, sure. Um, I also, um, have set up a meeting, uh, with, um, my old friend, still hopefully a friend, uh, former lieutenant governor, Tim Murray, um, who is now the Chamber of Commerce, uh, president, Worcester Chamber of Commerce president. Uh, he's coming out, uh, to speak with me. I, I don't know if he's coming, if you're going, Rich, to that as well, uh, on Tuesday morning at ten, um, he's gonna come by and, um, you know, talk about some business development and what, what can be done. And, and I know that there was some other issues with, uh, you know, another chamber, the chamber that you're involved in with, with trying to join some forces together.
Yeah.
You know, my, my perspective, what I would give to Tim would be, what can he be doing for economic development for the town, you know, for, for us? Um, you know, um, and I think Tim, uh, Tim has some contacts and some credibility that, you know, could be helpful to the town. Um, and hopefully that, um, you know, reconnecting with him, uh, to see if he can, uh, to help us out in, in some way, shape or form. Um, and so, um, uh, I, I'm also, um, there's a couple of other, um, of, of, of events that are coming up, um, or dates that I want, uh, the board to be made aware of. Um, the fifteenth of May, we're looking at closing the special town meeting warrant, um, so to give us enough time to post it. So, um, right now there's about eleven articles on the special. Um, you know, there's one article that you, I don't think have reviewed yet. Um, so, um, I will be bringing that warrant, uh, by for next week's meeting, and if there's any other departments that come in with some late warrant articles, I'll, I'll certainly s- send them along to the, to the board, uh, for looking at. Um, the Ware Business Association, uh, is gonna be having a, a kind of a, a, a fun night, uh, and, and May thirteenth in Ware, and it's, it's a good group because it brings a lot of business people together to talk about different perspectives all around the community. It's not just Ware, and it's gonna be on Hannah's on Main, uh, from five to seven. Uh, I will be a- attending that meeting as a representative of the town, and any board member that's, you know, interested in going, by all means, you're, you're welcome to come.
With Daisy?
Uh, May thirteenth. Uh, that's a Tuesday from five to seven. Five to seven thirty. Um, and, um, we are also looking at, um, on May twenty-second, um, the Wrights Mills Master Recovery Plan, that will be finished. And so Weston and Sampson is gonna be making a presentation, a final presentation to the town, uh, to, to the board, I should say, um, at its meeting on the twenty-second. Um, and we'll have a final, um, you know, report and final documentation of that, um, ready for the board, so. That's where we are with our, um, our agenda.
Thank you. New business? Nothing. Old business?
When's the desk coming?
Uh, last week Steve had mentioned to me that we would possibly see it this week, so I, I don't think it's gonna be this week, so, uh, I'm hoping next week.
Anything else? Correspondence? Comments and concerns? I do. Speaking of, in, in West Warren, North Street. Uh, North Street is one of those roads where in winter they get, parking is not allowed. Everybody parks their cars on their property. When that ban is off, it's really impossible to go around the block if somebody, if a car comes in the opposite direction. Cars park on both sides, it's very, um, busy block because of the, uh, restaurant and the dance factory, and kids are crossing the road all the time and it just gets a little dangerous. I don't know if we could look at it a little bit or, you know, try to give it a, think about it, what? Because how come in, when the ban is on, it's really nice to go over there, everybody parks on their property, but when that not is, everybody just leaves the car on, on, on the road and it's, if you go in one way and there's another car going the other way, there's no way to go.
Who's jurisdiction, is that police or highway or who does that? Could we do no parking on one side of the street?
That'd be nice. All right. That will be, um, healthy. Whatever, whatever side you say it, the property owners on the other side complain that we're not.
Yeah, sure.
You know, so it kind of becomes an issue a little bit.
There is a parking lot behind that building too, right?
And it gets full all the time.
Yeah, that belongs to the property owner.
Right, yeah, but that's the dance factory and the rest.
That's for the dance factory and stuff, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's just pay attention, you know. Just try to think about a solution.
I think if it gets too bad, we, you just notify the police department, because if a fire truck can't get down there in an emergency, then there's an issue. If, you, you gotta think of it as like if emergency responders can't get to locations, then.
Definitely they won't be able to get it. Anything else on the board?
Uh, I have one thing, I seen Sharon Melly at the, at, well, purchasing stuff for the Senior Center, and she is, um, holding a Kentucky Derby event on Monday. Um, so seniors are gonna have hats and they're gonna have horses and food and all kinds of stuff. Not real horses, horses that they made, and they're gonna be jockeying in position and stuff, so they're gonna have games and events for the seniors. So, if you're a senior in the community and you want to be part of it, um, go to the Senior Center. Sounds like a good time, and good food. They get a very good cook over there now, so. And I hear the place is pretty warm.
Or cool.
Or cool, depending on the day.
You got any?
Nope.
I just want to remind everyone, May sixth is voting day, come out and vote. Please don't forget that, and we're gonna try to, uh, post and, uh, send a few notices. It's very important for the town to express your voice, to come out and vote. Um, I, I really encourage all the town to, um, do as much as possible to come and vote, so that way we can be all together on this and, and become a better town. I don't have any other comments or concerns, I'm gonna open it up to the public, and, nobody, you, but, yes, Joe?
Joe Contract Resident. Well, at noon time today, the president had a type of celebration in the Rose Garden. He invited many of the leaders of religion because two hundred fifty years ago, they had what was known then as a National Day of Prayer. So he declared today to be a National Day of Prayer, and as part of that, he has established in the west wing of the White House, the Office of Religion. It seems that the way the Constitution is written, it's not a separation of church and state. It states you cannot make any law against religion. There's a big difference. And he had just about every major religion that you could think of in this country. He had rabbis, Christian leaders, Catholic leaders. He was, he even invited an Ayman of the Arabic Muslim world. It states on our money, in God we trust. And if you look at the back of the dollar bill, in God we trust one, in capital letters. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else? Here none, our next meeting, or the board's next meeting will be on. Here none. Our next meeting, or the board's next meeting will be on May eighth, six o'clock. Same place, same room.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Richard Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. We are adjourned. And that was my last.